Call to order the January 13th, 2014, Latrobe City Council meeting. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I've made some minor adjustments to the agenda, so I'll explain them as we get to them. But the first one is, at the beginning of every meeting, I'd like to have a moment of silence where people can ask for guidance, give thanks, or quietly relax. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buck.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Here.
Mrs. Caldwell Cravenor?
Here.
Mr. Scupora?
Here.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Here.
Ms. Beasy?
Here.
Mayor Wolford?
Here.
All present.
At this time, may I have the approval of minutes for the December 9th council meeting?
Madam Mayor, I move that the minutes on the December 27th, 2013 meeting be approved and accepted, and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk, where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries again, Miss Lee. May I have approval of the fiscal department reports for December and year end and paid bills for the month of December 2013?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second, please?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I do have a question on the bills. They're finalizing out the budget for the 2013 year, is that correct?
Correct.
Are we still anticipating some more expenses coming in yet for 2013 yet?
The auditor will adjust, you know, expenses backwards or forward depending on when they were received, but the year-end balance, you know, has been posted.
But do we know that we still have some outstanding bills that haven't come in yet from sources of margin?
There may still be some invoices for December that have not been paid yet.
So they'll come up next month then?
Yeah, the auditor, well, even if they were, the auditor would still back them. If we paid them already this month, he would back them into December of the last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries again, Miss Lee. The next part is the citizens' requests, and what we've done is, we've separated the citizens' requests into two portions. The first citizens' request, we're asking that it be strictly related to the items on the agenda. In other words, if you have a specific item that relates to anything that we're going to vote on or discuss on the agenda, this would be the time for you to come to the microphone and ask council, explain to council what your thoughts are, or how you would like them to vote, or ask them any questions relative to the agenda. And then at the end of the meeting, after we get through all the agenda items, I'm actually taking, I don't see Mr. Miller here, but it was his suggestion, we'll have another section of citizens' requests where we can just talk about anything, anything that's on your mind, any questions that you have, but we're asking that these be limited to three- to five-minute comments. So we're going to give this a try and see if it works. This way, we can get through the agenda items quickly, and then, at the end of the meeting, if there's items on people's minds or things that they want to discuss that aren't on the agenda, we'll have an opportunity to hear from the public. So at this time, if there are any items that the citizens would like to speak about relating to the agenda items, and if you'll notice, the agenda items, and if you don't have an agenda, I believe there's some up here on the desk. We have administration and finance, public works, and police department items on the agenda today, so if there's anything specific related to those agenda items that you'd like to speak about, please come with a microphone, state your name and address. Okay, at this time, if there's no discussion regarding the items on the agenda, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is committee reports. We don't have any committees established yet, I'd like to wait until we get a full contingent of council before we establish committees. We will have, for sure, three committees, one, a finance committee, a public safety committee, and a personnel committee, and those committees will be comprised of two council members on each committee, and will be expected to report monthly at the council meeting as to what's going on within their committee. And some months, that may be nothing, but there'll still be an opportunity for the committees to get together outside of these meetings and address any issues they have. So at this time, we don't have any committee reports. Our next item on the agenda is foreign authority reports, and before we would do that, I would like to ask, we have prepared a proclamation in memory of Don McGuire, who passed away on December 13th, 2013, and I'd like to read that proclamation and ask Mr. McGuire's family to please come to the front. Whereas Donald T. McGuire, age 84, passed away Friday, December 13th, 2013, and whereas Don, who served as a Marine in the Korean War, upon his return, became a rural mail carrier at the Latrobe Post Office for 36 years, and also a part-time school bus driver for 25 years. And whereas Don shared his time and talents as a senior funeral altar server and member of the Holy Name Society of the Holy Family Roman Catholic Church. He was a member of the Knights of Columbus, Daniel P. Nolan, Council 940 in Latrobe, and the St. Vincent Assembly 918, Fourth Degree. Don was a life member of the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, Latrobe Lodge 907, a charter member of the Rolling Rock Detachment of the Marine Corps League, a member of the Thomas B. Anderson American Legion Post 515, the Disabled American Veterans Association, the Ancient Order of Hibernians, Division 17, and a past member of the Westmoreland Democratic Committee. And whereas Don believed in giving back to the community, having served as the zoning officer for the city, and more recently was the treasurer for both the Greater Latrobe School Authority and the Latrobe Municipal Authority. And whereas those who knew Don were always greeted with a smile and kind words for everyone. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of the City of Latrobe, for themselves and on behalf of our entire community, hereby recognize and honor Donald T. McGuire for his commitment to a lifetime of volunteerism to help make our city a better place in which to live. His belief that, quote, "The cup was always half-full rather than half-empty," end quote, which he shared daily through his words and actions, will be sorely missed by not only his wife Janet and his children, but also by those whom he touched on a daily basis. This proclamation is issued under the great seal of the City of Latrobe this 13th day of January 2014. Do we have any foreign authority reports tonight? Okay, department reports, Joe? Public Works?
Next Monday, the bridge, some people refer to it as Murphy's Bridge, state calls it Baldur's Bridge, it will be closing Monday for demolition and reconstruction. It will be closed most of 2014. It's going to pose as an inconvenience to a lot of residents, the public works department. We'll be able to get through it, I think the overall result will be worth it. The transfer station will continue business as usual, the same days, Monday through Saturday, the same hours, seven to two through dumping. The posted detour route by the state is Theater Street up on Route 30 down to Mission Road. All of us that are from and around here know some different ways to get around, but that is the official posted detour, is up on Route 30, which is right across from Walmart, Theater Street, down to Mission, make a right and come down. For the people, like I said once again, that are familiar with the area, there's several other routes that you can get to the transfer station.
What was the date you said it was going to be closed to when?
It's going to be closed Monday morning, the 20th, sometime Monday morning, and the completion date is not exact, but it will be most of 2014. It's a completely new bridge, Mayor.
Chief Boomer here? Yes, anything, Chief? Chief Brazilli? Now to the agenda items, Mr. Kelly. Administration, Finance?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item under administration finance is a resolution to appoint a new auditor for the auditing the financial records of the City of Latrobe. I believe we have two applicants, and I'll let Mr. Brazilli explain further.
Madam Mayor, members of council, in your packet you have a report that I prepared. In that report, under the management report, is a review of the two firms that submitted by the January 6 deadline, De Blasio and De Blasio Associates, located at Fry Farm Road here in Unity Township, and in De Lisi, Keenan and Associates from Greensburg. Both have local government work. Both have good reviews, not only from references that they recommended, but other background reports that I was able to conduct. However, I'm making a recommendation for De Blasio and De Blasio Associates based on price. Their price for 2013 is $10,000, 2014, $10,250, 2015, $10,500, compared to the prices of for 2013, $13,900, 2014, $14,200, and 2015, $14,500. The second reason for the recommendation is that De Blasio and De Blasio Associates have more local government work, including communities of similar size, larger size, and more complex government audits, including the federal government single audit, which they have extensive experience in. Lastly, part of those recommendations, those municipalities they've served, some of them for over two decades, which is a testament to their competencies and ability to get the work done. I recommend council make this decision this evening because included in this, of course, is the 2013 audit. Being a new auditor, they'll need to get in immediately to start looking at our files and be able to meet the deadlines, including a DCD report that's due April 1, so it's really incumbent upon doing that. Of course, council could wait till February, but I recommend that they do that this evening. Any questions?
You've collected references on both these audits, reviewed both, you showed me the packet of references you had, and I saw them.
Correct, yes, I have not only the references that they shared, but others as well, you know, others within the state government and who are familiar with local government audits. Both firms come highly recommended, so the decision isn't based necessarily on the skillset, it's the degree of similar-sized audits price, and quite frankly, De Blasio and De Blasio do have more recommendations from governments our size or larger.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I have a resolution, and I'll put the name of the recommended party. The resolution reads, Appointing City Auditor Now Therefore Be Resolved, Section 1, that De Blasio and De Blasio be and is hereby appointed as auditor for the financial records of the City of Latrobe. Section 2, that the within resolution shall become effective immediately, resolved in council of the state, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Beasy. Any discussions, questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-4. Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Cravenor?
Yes.
Ms. Beasy?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote is six yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item under administration finance is also a resolution. It's entitled approving entering into a cooperation agreement with the Latrobe Community Revitalization Program, Inc., for the final funding year of the Main Street program. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the council of the City of Latrobe does hereby accept and approve the entering into a Main Street program cooperation agreement with the Latrobe Community Revitalization Program, Inc., set agreement in form being attached here to Exhibit A, and Section 2, that the council of the City of Latrobe hereby authorizes the mayor, city secretary, and any other proper city officer to sign the cooperation agreement, take any and all subsequent action, and sign any and all documents required to carry into effect the receipt of the final-year funding grant from the Department of Community and Economic Development, as well as the provisions of this resolution resolved in council of the state, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second, please?
I'll second that.
Are there any questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-5. Ms. Beasy?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Cravenor?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote is six yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, again, under the administration finance department is another resolution. It is entitled approving entering into a cooperation agreement with the Latrobe Parking Authority and furtherance of the submission of an application for redevelopment assistance capital grant funding for the rehabilitation and refurbishing of the city parking garage. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the council of the City of Latrobe does hereby approve and authorize entering into a cooperation agreement between the city and the authority in the form attached here to Exhibit A, which agreement shall be included as part of the documentation of the submission of an application for redevelopment assistance capital grant funding, the amount $1 million for the rehabilitation and refurbishing of the city parking garage. Section 2, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the above described cooperation agreement. Section 3, that the secretary of the City of Latrobe is hereby authorized and directed to send a certified copy of the resolution to any proper state or federal agency requesting the same attached to the resolution is the cooperation agreement. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second, please? Thank you. Any discussions, questions?
I have a question. This agreement is part of the application process for the funds to be allocated to the city and the parking authority? It's an agreement, part of the process that's needed to get the funds here for the grant that we've applied for, is that correct?
Correct. The city is a recipient of a $1 million grant to the eligible to receive the $1 million grant, and they have this cooperation agreement with the sub-recipient, who's the Latrobe Parking Authority.
And I've read the agreement, and it doesn't dictate in there how the money's to be spent as of yet, we're just agreeing that we have a cooperation agreement with the parking authority?
Correct. The state has approved, in a sense, the project. One of the steps will be to really audit, to make sure all those expenditures were meeting the conditions of the project, including certified steel and certified payrolls and so forth.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2014-6. Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Cravenor?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Beasy? Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote is six yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda under administration finance is an ordinance. It is entitled fixing the tax rate for general city purposes and other purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2014, and ending December 31, 2014. Now therefore be enacted and ordained, Section 1, that a tax being the same as hereby levied on all real property within the City of Latrobe, subject to taxation for city purposes, for the fiscal year 2014 beginning January 1, 2014, and ending December 31, 2014, as follows: A, for general city purposes, a tax rate in the sum of $21.30 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation at 100% market value of assessed valuation; B, Adams Memorial Library, a tax rate in the sum of .20 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation at 100% market value of assessed valuation, levied in accordance with the vote of the electorate of Latrobe Borough at a special election of November 1953. C, for other purposes for general government, protection of persons and property health and sanitation highways, special services and other miscellaneous services. Section 2, that the total tax rate hereby levied for all of the city purposes as set forth in Section 1, be in the same as hereby fixed at $21.50 mils. Section 3, that any ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith or in conflict with this ordinance or any parts thereof be in the same as hereby repealed. Section 4, that the within ordinance shall take effect on the date of publication of the post-enactment notice of passage of the same, enacted and ordained this date, the motion would be to enact the ordinance as read by the solicitor, or the solicitor might also add that the tax rate is unchanged from the previous year.
May I have a motion to enact a resolution?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second, please?
I'll second that.
Can't do both.
Who seconded it?
I'll second it. Who made the motion, Mr. Bald Mary or Mike did? Oh.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Scupora made the motion, and Mr. Bald Mary seconded it. Any questions?
Ms. Buck? This is Ordinance 2014-1. This is Caldwell Cravenor?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Beasy?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote is six yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the last item under administration finance department is a resolution I will summarize it. It's ratifying the action of the city solicitor and city manager to engage Jack Lizeth and perform an appraisal of property owned by CCP Properties LLC for a tax assessment appeal. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the City of Latrobe hereby approves and ratifies the actions of the city solicitor and/or city manager in engaging Jack Lizeth of Professional Real Estate Appraisal Services, Greensburg, Pennsylvania, to perform an appraisal of the former La Nature's Complex now owned by CCP Properties LLC. Section 2, the cost of the appraisal shall modesty $2,500. Further set costs shall be shared between the City of Latrobe, County of Westmoreland, and the Greater Latrobe School District on a proportionate basis according to each taxing body's current military. Section 3, that a contract is hereby awarded to Mr. Lizeth or perform said appraisal, contingent upon the approval of the Greater Latrobe School District and the County of Westmoreland to engage Mr. Lizeth's services on the basis set forth above in Section 4, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, solicitor, and any other proper officer are authorized and directed to sign all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. I might add that the city and the county share each of the appraisal, will be about $460, the school district will hold the balance, and that's according to our military rates.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. Apparently, we're in a dispute over the assessed value of this property with the current owner.
The fair market value prior to the filing of the tax assessment appeal that is currently in existence is, and I might be off a little bit, but it's about $5 million to the value. Their appraiser has set that figure at $2,600,000, which is roughly one-half, and we have had Mr. Lizeth review their appraisal, we do not agree with it. That's not to say that we may not work out a settlement somewhere in between, but 2.6 is exceedingly low for that cost.
And currently, the property under age is about $25,000 in real estate taxes. It's hard to say that's cut in half, the city stands to lose about $12,500.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-7. Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Beasy?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Cravenor?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote is six yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we are now in the public works department, the first item here is also a resolution. It is entitled amending Chapter 256, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 25654, permit parking, now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that Chapter 256, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 25654, Schedule 8, permit parking, is hereby amended to delete permit parking on the following streets and highways. The highway is West First Avenue, the side would be the south side, and it would be from the alley west of Ligonier Street to Polk Street. Section 2, that appropriate city officers, including but not limited to the city manager, chief police, and superintendent of public works, be hereby authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to carry into effect the above amendments to Chapter 256 in this resolution. Section 3, that all other provisions of Chapter 256 not amended herein shall remain in full force. In fact, the last section says that the resolution will become effective immediately, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jimon Angelo, second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Scupora. Any discussion, questions?
This is the parking that we discussed at our agenda meeting, the removal of the signs near the hospital's property. Correct?
Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2014-8. Ms. Beasy?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Cravenor?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote is six yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item again, under public works, is also a resolution. It's entitled approving the consent assessment of a civil penalty from the Department of Environmental Protection, now therefore be resolved, Section 1. Whereas the council of the City of Latrobe does hereby approve entering into a consent assessment of civil penalty agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection in the form attached here to Exhibit A, Section 2, the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action. authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second please?
I'll second that.
Discussions? Everyone understands what this is, right? Do you know what this is? Any questions?
Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2014-9. Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craven?
Yes.
Mrs. Beese?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote of six yes.
That's it, Mr. Kelly? Okay. The next item is under Police Department, a special recognition proclamation for Detective John Sleisman. Detective Sleisman, would you please come to the front, please?
Whereas on or about December 10, 2013, Detective John Sleisman of the Latrobe Police Department was, with other department officers, involved in responding to a domestic disturbance in the city. And whereas the responding officers attempted to arrest an actor in his backyard, but he ignored police commands and entered a vehicle parked along the street. And whereas Detective Sleisman attempted to block the actor's vehicle. However, while he stood outside of the driver's door, the actor began to accelerate towards Detective Sleisman, and he had to lunge to avoid being struck by the actor's vehicle, which missed him by inches. And whereas Detective Sleisman, together with other officers, entered into a high-speed pursuit that continued into Dairy Township, whereupon the actor wrecked his vehicle and attempted to flee. And whereas Detective Sleisman, together with the other officers, subdued the actor, who was later charged with various crimes. And whereas the actions of Detective Sleisman, putting his own life, health, and safety in jeopardy, reflect the courage of our law enforcement officers in performing their daily tasks. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of the city of Latrobe, for themselves and on behalf of our entire community, hereby recognize and commend Detective Sleisman for his bravery and exemplary conduct as a police officer of the city of Latrobe. The mayor and council express their appreciation and gratitude to Detective Sleisman for the dedicated service he has provided to the city throughout the years. This proclamation is issued under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this 13th day of January 2014. Congratulations Detective.
Now we go on to unfinished business. Appointments to board the authorities. At this time, I would like to appoint Charles Dominic to the unexpired term of the late Mr. Donald McGuire.
Madam Mayor, I have a resolution to that effect. It's entitled appointing member to the Latrobe Municipal Authority. Now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that Charles Dominic, being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Municipal Authority, to fill the unexpired term of Donald T. McGuire's said term to expire on January 31, 2018, resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jivinangelo. May I have a second please?
I'll second.
Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-10. Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craven?
No.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mrs. Beese?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote of five yes, one no.
At this time, I appoint Tom Couch as the Unity Township Representative on the Latrobe Municipal Authority.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the resolution would read as follows. Appointing a member to the Latrobe Municipal Authority now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that Thomas Couch, being is hereby appointed as the Unity Township Representative of the Latrobe Municipal Authority for a five-year term, said term to expire January 31, 2019, resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second please?
I'll second.
Any questions? Sorry.
The letter from Unity Township states a different expiration than Mr. Kelly just gave. It says 2018.
Five to five-year terms. Yeah.
I'm not saying you're wrong. Just saying that the letter that we have from Unity Township says that the term expires in 2018. Maybe they need to be refreshed on when that term expires.
They may be thinking of in terms of December 31. Whereas we look at it, we look at it, she said they have December 31 written in the letter. So in that sense, they are correct. 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. What we tend to look at is when, January, the following year.
I think there's something, yeah, these terms expire January, at the end of January, not the end of December. That's probably it. You can follow and make sure we have the right dates, correct? Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-11. Mrs. Caldwell Craven?
Yes.
Mrs. Beese?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote of six yes.
We have no candidates for, we have one five-year term on the zoning hearing board, four-year term on the planning commission, a six-year term on the civil service commission, and one five-year term on the industrial development.
We have one more on the municipal board.
Yeah, we do, but we're not doing anything without them yet.
It's unofficial.
It expires at the end of the month. So we're still looking for people to fill Parking Authority, Industrial Development Authority, Civil Service Commission, Planning Commission, and Zoning Hearing Board. So if anyone out there is interested in participating in any of these boards, please talk to Alex. We really need, we really need some people on these boards.
Mayor, we do have an applicant for the zoning hearing board, the incumbent.
We do?
He reapplying for his position, Eric Cosby.
Okay.
And the Civil Service Commission vacancy, William Glasser, that little asterisk means it's the incumbent. He is reapplying.
What happened on my, on my agenda?
It should be in the.
Oh, okay. Is it in the attachment?
Yeah, I gave a whole cover sheet with all of them. It's further back in the package.
Okay.
And the same with the Parking Authority. Carl Bolger.
I was looking at the agenda.
Do you have this now?
Yeah. I have that. So. You have a resolution then for the zoning hearing board, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor.
The resolution would read appointing member to the Latrobe Zoning Hearing Board now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that Eric Cosby, being is hereby appointed as a member of the zoning hearing board for a five-year term, said term to expire January 31, 2019. Motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion please?
I'll make that motion.
I'm second.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-12. Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mrs. Beese?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craven?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote of six yes.
We still need a zoning hearing board alternate, correct?
Correct.
And there is still a vacancy on the planning commission.
Correct.
That gets us to the Civil Service Commission and the incumbent, Mr. Glasser, is interested in continuing to serve, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the resolution would read appointment to the Latrobe Planning Commission now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that William Glasser, being is hereby appointed to the Latrobe Planning Commission.
No. Civil Service Commission.
Appointment to the Latrobe Civil Service Commission. Now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that William Glasser, being is hereby appointed to the Latrobe Civil Service Commission for a six-year term, said term to expire January 31, 2020, resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion please?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-13. Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Beese?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craven?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote of six yes.
Okay, we still have a vacancy on the Industrial Development Authority. The next is the Parking Authority and the incumbent, Carl Skid Bolinger, is reapplying. So, Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the resolution reads appointing member to the Latrobe Parking Authority now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that Carl Bolinger, being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Parking Authority for a five-year term, said term to expire January 31, 2019, resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion please?
So moved, Madam.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-14. Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mrs. Beese?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craven?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
No.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote of five yes, one no.
The Parking Act Commission, is that the council representative?
It's for Bruce Jones.
Oh, that's for his, okay. Right, Bruce Jones, okay. Bruce Jones.
I mean, Bruce is the reg.
Yes, it's Bruce's term, it's up. Okay. Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the resolution reads appointing member to the Latrobe Unity Youngstown Parks and Recreation Commission. Now therefore be resolved that Bruce Jones, being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Unity Youngstown Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term, said term to expire on January 31, 2017, resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion please?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-15. Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craven?
Yes.
Mrs. Beese?
Yes.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote of six yes.
I have been currently serving as the council liaison for the Adams Memorial Library, but I have asked Mrs. Beese if she would be interested in doing that. So at this time, I appoint Julie Beese.
I have resolution. Appointing council liaison to the Adams Memorial Library now therefore be resolved. That Julie Beese, being is hereby appointed as a liaison from council to the city of Latrobe, or council of the city of Latrobe to the Adams Memorial Library until a successor shall be appointed. And the resolution shall become effective immediately, resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion please?
So moved, Madam.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014-16. Mrs. Beese?
abstained.
Mr. Jivinangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craven?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Vote of five yes, one abstained.
Okay. At this time, it's open forum. So anything on your minds, please come up to the microphone, state your name and where you live, and anyone have anything they'd like to bring before the council? You're gonna make this easy for me, aren't you? Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing, then we'll move on to new business. We have any new business at this time?
Madam Mayor, under new business, I would ask that council adjourn briefly for an executive session dealing with personnel.
Okay. We'll keep it short. Are there any other items of new business at this time? Senior managers report? Do you have something, Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, because that was an executive session, and I know you just announced that we should announce after we return, that it was for the purpose of discussion of personnel matters.
Our executive session was for the discussion of personnel matters. Thank you. Keep me straight, Jim. Senior managers report?
Madam Mayor, members of council, my report is before you as written. Just a number of things related to the 2013 budget and kind of where it landed. You'll see at the table, City of Latrobe 2013 Fund Report with the beginning balances, January 2013, and the ending balances, 2013 and December. Along with that, there's a number of other items particularly relating to a plan to fill the seat vacated by Miss Wolford on January 6, 2014. The term that remains is a little less than two years. It would expire on December 31, 2015. According to the city code, we have 45 days to fill the vacancy. We have circulated an advertisement for interested citizens to apply. And on January 27, at the council's agenda prep meeting, at 6:30 PM, we've asked each applicant to come and make a brief presentation whereby they would state their qualifications and interests, as well as share a little bit about their vision for why they want to fill the position. And that will occur on the 27th, and then the council would look to, at February 10, at the beginning of the meeting, seat the person that they can be sworn in and then be able to participate in the meeting on February 10. Besides that, there's a number of other items that are covered briefly in the management report. I'm more than happy to provide greater detail as council desires, and my internal contact informations on the report as well. Any questions?
The only thing I have in my report is, I'm really thrilled to be here. My voicemail box is set up, so you can call and leave me messages. I check it several times a day. Any comments or ideas that you have as far as the agenda, how you'd like, things you'd like to see us do? It's a fluid format. We can change it to however we want. So we're here for you and to serve you and the needs of the city. So I'm just happy to be here. Thank you all for coming, and I hope to see lots of people at every meeting. And any ideas you have, call Alex, call myself, and we'll get moving, okay? Thanks. If this time could, I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam.
Second please? All in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourn?